Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Just turn my video off until everyone's ready.
Take your time.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay. All right.
Hi, Susan. Thanks for being with us. Are you hearing me? Yeah, okay. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, hello.
Hello.
We can. You're joining earlier than expected.
Well, actually, it was moved to 7:45, so I'll be here for a little bit and I'll have to jump off. I'll jump back on again.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, Eileen, I think we have most of the folks who were expecting tonight. I didn't hear anything from Mark Mattzel. I'm not sure if he's attending, but we did hear from some of the other folks who had conflicts.
Yeah, I just, I'm waiting for, I haven't heard from Sujatha, so, or Mark. The only, the only three I knew were Craig, Shree, and Allison, who are not going to be here.
Okay, and Gaston is not here just yet either.
Yeah.
But maybe I'll.
Mark just emailed everyone?
Just emailed. He said no.
Okay, thank you for the update in real time.
He's not going to be here. Okay.
Okay, I may read us in and then hopefully by the time we take roll call, we'll have. First person, I see Gaston. Yep, okay, great. I'm gonna go ahead and begin. That's okay. In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, June 1, 2022, at 7:30 PM via the Zoom platform. Due to the COVID-19 virus, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purposes of planning board meetings. This meeting notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and/or video means. This notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall bulletin board, and Milburn Town Hall front door. Roll call.
Diane Aglow?
Yes.
Gaston Halpert?
Here.
Deborah Nevis?
Here.
Maggie Miggins?
Here.
Okay, and just, Sujatha is here. Daniel Baer?
Here.
That's all?
Here.
Sujatha and Sean?
Here.
Wonderful, thank you. Our first item this evening is approval of the minutes from our May 4 meeting. Planning Board members who are present that can vote to approve that include Gaston, Maggie, Sujatha, Deborah, Shreeney, and myself. So it was a brief meeting, but hopefully everybody had the opportunity to review minutes. Did anybody have any corrections or questions regarding the May 4 minutes? Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes from May 4.
Oh, second.
Excuse Gaston, all in favor? Hi.
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 Abstain.
Bye. Bye.
Any, any oppose? Okay, and we'll assume all I didn't say who were not in attendance would abstain from voting. And the May 4 minutes are approved. Thank you. Our second item of business tonight is going to be a discussion regarding the fair share housing element, which I apologize, I had my agenda open, but I don't have it open in front of me. But we have one application which we'll be hearing subsequent to this, but first, we're gonna open, open up for a discussion. What was circulated to the board was, and I believe also made available on our website, that you really not yet, that will be, but prior to the, once public notice is given, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So this is what's titled, "The Third Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan." This is one of the roles and responsibilities of our board as a planning board. We have with us tonight another Beth, Beth McManus, who will introduce, who will be giving a presentation. She was the, one of the authors of the plan on behalf of the township and for our board to review. And we, as a board, would have the responsibility to adopt this element. That is not the intention for tonight. Tonight is sort of the information session for Beth to explain to us, to walk through, answer any questions we may have about what is stated in it, or what the goal of this plan is to do. And then towards the end of this discussion, we would then look to move to, I guess, Ed, can you clarify, are we moving to approve to discuss it and have it, or it just will be then discussed on our June 15?
What we'll do at the, at the end of Beth McManus's presentation is we would look for the board to set a public hearing date, because before an amendment to the master plan can be adopted, there needs to be a public hearing. This is not the public hearing. This is just the introduction to the board and to members of the public that are here of the housing element and fair share plan. If the board sets the public hearing, we're looking to set it for June 15, our next regular meeting. There is time for notice. It's a 10-day public, published notice and some other, you know, individual notices to the county planning board, to clerks and so forth. So that's what we'll be, that's the objective tonight.
Great, thank you. And as such, just to reiterate what. Great, thank you. And as such, just to reiterate what Ed just shared, so because tonight is not a public hearing, this is not the venue which would be happening if we move in the direction as just set forth. There would be a public hearing, which would be set June 15. Fall goes well, and at that time, we would allow this plan to be reviewed, as I noted, it would be made available, and then members of the public would have the opportunity to, at that time, ask questions or make comments. So tonight, again, is the information hearing and for the board to sort of begin to digest, and if there are questions among the board, we would start to sort of gather them and and think through them. So without any further ado, Beth, I would like to turn it over to you and ask if you can just introduce yourself a bit more than I did, and move into what I believe is a brief presentation for our benefit. So thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. Hi, everybody. My name is Beth McManus. I'm just a little background. I'm a planner. I'm a principal at Kyle McManus Associates. We're planners down in Hopewell, New Jersey. We do a lot of municipal work, as well as other work for, for developers, for some private development, and also, I personally, as well as my business partner, work as special master in other affordable housing cases. I've been working with the township for almost a year since July 2021, and I came in right when, right when the case was getting a bit heated with the court to, to try to get things over the finish line and, and get a settlement for Milburn. I'm gonna talk about that today, but I think, as everybody probably knows, you did settle with Fair Share Housing Center, and this housing element and fair share plan is one of the major steps for implementing that settlement agreement. One of the things we'll, we'll talk a little bit about is, it's not, it's not simply enough for municipalities to settle with Fair Share Housing Center and to execute that settlement agreement. There are several additional steps that are necessary to finish the process. And so that's what we're gonna talk about today. I have a presentation planned. I'm gonna share my screen. I'm hoping that's gonna be permitted. There is a lot of information here, folks, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna move quickly through this. I welcome any questions, but I, I think I know that there are some new board members here, and some folks that may not have been through the last Housing Element Fair Share Plan, may not be familiar with affordable housing in New Jersey. So I'm gonna provide an overview of it. It's, it's also contained in the Housing Elements, is in the, in the earlier parts, but I thought it might be helpful just to reiterate some of that information. And before we get to the actual strategies, which are certainly gonna be discussed today, I want everybody to have a good understanding about how we got here and why this, why this process occurs in New Jersey. So with that, here we go, on some screen sharing. Okay, so I hope everybody can see that.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So, let's see. So first, like I said, I wanna talk a little bit about the introduction and history for this, and quickly, I wanna review what is affordable housing, because one of the things that I find is a lot of folks are not clear about it in the state. And so fundamentally, it means households or housing units that are deed restricted for not less than 30 years to households that have incomes that don't exceed 80% of median income. And so what this table depicts is the 80%, which is moderate income, the maximum income for a moderate income household, also the maximum income for a low-income household, which is 50% of median income, and then a maximum income for a very, very low-income household, which is 30% of median income. The various levels are important as you really drill down to the details of affordable housing units, which I'm, I can talk to folks about, but I'm not gonna get into the weeds on, but I want folks to see that when we talk about affordable housing, we're really talking about a variety of incomes. It's not just simply less than 80%, and that's it. There are, there's a certain stratification that each, each town must address. The other thing that I think is highlighted from this table is that the low, and especially the moderate income households are really not that low. When we're talking about, for example, a three-person household at moderate income, it's about $82,000. So yes, the very low income, $31,000, that's certainly significantly less, but when we talk about affordable housing, some of the affordable housing is not quite as low income as what I think some folks assume. And so you can find more information about this in the Housing Element, but that's an overview. And along those same lines, I also wanted to highlight some examples, sales and rental prices, which is a common question I get. So if you take a look at this, for an example, as a for-sale two-bedroom unit, depending on whether you're very low, low, or moderate income, that sales price is gonna range between about 87 and as much as $200,000. And similarly, for rental units, those prices are gonna range between approximately $700 and $1,400 a month. So again, significantly lower than the prices we would find in a municipality like Milburn, but I think often higher than what some folks might expect. So that's a background on what is affordable housing. I just wanna take a quick minute and talk about how we got here. I think the history of affordable housing in New Jersey could probably be several meetings. I'm gonna try to boil it down to about 60 seconds. So this started in 1975, when we had the Mount Laurel I decision. That's New Jersey Supreme Court decision found that municipalities have a constitutional obligation, so embedded in our New Jersey constitution, to create opportunities for affordable housing. This was followed up after quite a bit of litigation with a Mount Laurel II decision in 1983, and that's when the court started to get a little bit more specific, again, our New Jersey Supreme Court, and they said that municipalities need specific obligations. They need a number of affordable units that must be planned. Time continued, a lot more litigation, actually. Unfortunately, not too dissimilar to what we have now, which is sort of chaos as municipalities work with the courts to get, to get their affordable housing obligation taken care of. It resulted in the 1985 Fair Housing Act, and while there have been amendments, that remains the same Fair Housing Act that we're looking at today and is relevant today. And the Fair Housing Act did a lot of things, but one of the things it did was it set up the Council on Affordable Housing. And that is the state agency that is tasked with reviewing and approving municipal affordable housing plans, and also determining municipal affordable housing obligations. Now, if you're wondering why we're not talking about COA now, we're talking about the courts. Let me show you what's happened since then. So we had our, our state agency in place, Council on Affordable Housing. It worked relatively well up until about 2001 or so. They issued rules, they approved housing plans, municipalities worked through the process. When they got to the third round, which started in 2001, it took them three years to issue rules. They did so a handful of times in 2008, 2011, ultimately, 2014 again, and each time, rules were overturned by the courts, and at the very last moment, when the court said, COA, you've got to adopt rules, they actually failed to do so. They had rules approved, or excuse me, they had rules drafted, they got to their COA board meeting, and it was literally a 3-3 tie, and that meant that the rule adoption failed. And so what happened next was the Mount Laurel V decision, and IV decision, sorry, in 2015. And that is the decision that really creates the situation that we're all in today, Milburn, as well as every other municipality in the state. And the decision basically said, municipalities, you cannot wait on this state agency anymore. They are more bound, they are unable to fulfill their role, and instead, towns were basically gonna go back to before the 1985 Fair Housing Act. You have to work with Superior Court to determine your affordable housing obligation, determine the strategies to meet that obligation, and to have your housing element, your fair share plan approved. And so, and that's why today, when I talk to you about the process that we're going through, you're not gonna hear me use the word COA very often, just as a, as a historical reference almost, but instead, we're working directly with Superior Court instead of the, instead of the state agency. Now, Milburn is, has been engaged in this process even before my involvement and before your settlement with Fair Share, as I think some folks here know. And also, I wanna use Milburn's history as an example of why municipalities go through this process. So fundamentally, municipalities go through this process, whether it's with COA or the courts, to have their housing elements reviewed and approved, because they want to avoid builder's remedy litigation. They want to avoid exclusionary zoning litigation, which is another word for builder's remedy litigation. The way our state works with affordable housing, the way it's been set up through the courts and through the Fair Housing Act, is it's actually a voluntary process. It doesn't feel like it, but it is. And that is because the, the stick, so to, so to speak, is just so significant. So the way that our New Jersey system works is municipalities are encouraged to, to go through this process, to get their housing elements approved, because doing so means that they are not vulnerable to that builder's remedy litigation. If municipalities, those towns that choose not to go through this process are left vulnerable or eligible for, for builder's remedy litigation, and this is, and this is something that actually happened here in Milburn, and I think is, I think I can say is sort of the reason why we're here today. So even before this, in 2015, Milburn did a good thing, and you created, or you facilitated an approval for the Upton, which is an inclusionary housing project, one that we'll talk about a little bit later. It's, I think, for folks that don't know, it's at the northern end of town, adjacent to, more or less adjacent to Short Hills Mall, and also the Country Club.
Beth, could I just ask you to, just in two sentences, explain builder's remedy?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I glossed over that. Thank you. Builder's remedy litigation is when often, most often, a developer will sue a municipality. And so as I said, you're eligible, you're vulnerable for a builder's remedy, and that's because the developer is taking advantage of the municipality's status of not having satisfied its affordable housing obligation. And so the developer is essentially saying to the court, I, Mr. Developer, will assist this municipality in creating affordable housing and fulfilling its constitutional obligation. And how do they do that? Will they do that through seeking approval for a development application, typically multifamily development, but not always? And a portion of, substantial portion of that development application must include affordable housing units. Now, when I say significant, I'm meaning basically 15 or 20%. It's not 50%, much less 80%. And so as the developer makes, makes a motion to the court for this builder's remedy litigation, the court would find presumably that the municipality has not met its affordable housing obligation, and they would essentially award the developer the right to proceed with that development. Yes, they need to go through site plan approval still, but the planning board's jurisdiction over the application is gonna be really limited, because part of that determination from the court is gonna be about the density and the fundamental things about that density. So it'll be density, building height, some of the setbacks, things like that. And so I can't tell you exactly what a builder's remedy litigation would look like, another one here or in another community. But the thing, the characteristic that seems to tie all of them together is that they are too big for what the municipality is comfortable with. So builder's remedy litigation down in Cumberland County is gonna look a lot different than something that you would see here in Essex County. But in every instance, it's been a development density, a development height, a housing type, or even a use, because they, they can be in commercial districts as well. It's, it's a development that is too much or too big for what the municipality's vision for that particular property is. Because if you think about it, if it was consistent with the zoning, well, then they would just go ahead and file the development application. But developers use the builder's remedy as, as a tool to get something for which they would not otherwise be entitled to. And so you think about, yes, the obvious examples are vacant properties, but it's also, it's also partially developed properties. Maybe it's, it could be the remaining piece of development. It could also be a redevelopment of, of, of a underperforming property. And so it's, they're particularly hard to predict. I find that a lot of municipalities don't think that there's any likelihood of a builder's remedy litigation until it's filed. They often take municipalities by surprise. And so, and that is, that is exactly what happened here. In 2018, Milburn Township went through, went through, I think, the pain of a builder's remedy litigation for the Silverman side, or sometimes referred to as the Woodland-Chatham Avenue property. And that's one of our affordable housing sites, as I think some folks probably know, that's a site that the municipality did settle with. You adopted zoning, and they eventually got site plan approval, and now they're gonna be part of your housing element and fair share plan. And while, and while that's sort of, I don't know that I wanna characterize it. It's done, it's gonna be, it's gonna provide a benefit to the community in the sense that it's getting you closer to meeting your affordable housing obligation. I think I can, I can say that it's something that everybody in Milburn, and frankly, every other community would like to avoid again. They're painful, and they're fundamentally disrupting the zoning that the municipality seeks to have in place. So we did this, you did this in 2018. As part of that, the municipality gained immunity from, that's the term, when you are no longer eligible for future builder's remedy litigation, and you did that by saying to the court, yes, we recognize we have this builder's remedy, but now we are committing to comply. We are committing to determining our affordable housing obligation and satisfying it. And so that really, that commitment, if you will, really started the process that we're in the middle of completing today. And so as part of those efforts, the, you guys actually did go ahead and adopt a housing element and fair share plan, done by your previous planner, and that plan really started or served as the, the starting point for negotiations with Fair Share Housing Center. And it's that process, that starting negotiations, that really leads us to where we're at today. And just a quick note, a lot of folks ask me, why are we dealing with Fair Share Housing Center? Why are they part of this process? Why is it not just Milburn and Superior Court? And that is because Fair Share Housing Center is an automatic interested party in every community's case. They are the housing advocacy organization that brought this case to the Supreme Court. They were one, one of the parties in that 2015 Mount Laurel IV decision I described, and because of their role in that, they became an automatic interested party. They became the party that municipalities needed to settle with if they wanted to avoid a trial before Superior Court. And avoiding a trial is a really good thing, because they're hugely costly, very costly, and I don't think that it's worked out particularly well for any municipality that's decided to go through it. I don't think that they got the result that they wanted. So settlements are clearly leading to better outcomes for municipalities, generally speaking. So that's why we have a settlement with Fair Share Housing Center, directly addressing our obligation and what we're gonna do to satisfy that. Just a little bit more on history. After we started this process, you got involved with a couple of other developers that made applications to participate in the process. One was Woodmont, another one is 249 Milburn Avenue. That's the Annie Says site. I'm gonna talk more about their properties later in this presentation. But ultimately, through a lot of, a lot of effort, we did ultimately reach settlement with Fair Share Housing Center in August 2021. That settlement agreement was approved by the court in January 22, 2022, so just a couple months now, several months now. And so now that we have our settlement agreement approved by the court, that means that we are off to the races for implementing it, and that's what we're doing today. So when we talk about implementing the house, implementing the settlement agreement, there are a lot of steps, but these are the big ones. So first and foremost, we've gotta adopt a housing element and fair share plan. That's basically takes our 20-page settlement agreement and turns it into a much longer narrative with a variety of implementing documents. The planning board's role in this is to adopt the housing element and fair share plan, because that is, it's a master plan element, just like a land use element or a circulation element. It's just simply a land use element that's within the jurisdiction of the planning board. It, it's not something that the Township Committee, for example, could adopt, even if they were so inclined. But they are required to endorse it, which is basically an acceptance of the plan that's been adopted by the planning board and an agreement to send it to Superior Court for their review and approval. Additionally, there are a number of other documents, resolutions, ordinances that need to be adopted. That's predominantly with the Township Committee, although of course, any land use ordinances will come to the planning board as part of master plan referral. That's predominantly with the township committee, although of course, any land use ordinances will come to the planning board as part of master plan referral. Once all of these documents are done or really close. We're going to have a compliance hearing before the court where the judge will formally review and hopefully approve the housing element fair share plan. That's currently scheduled. For June thirtieth, after what I hope will be an adoption of this plan. And then the other thing that is a large category and has a couple of steps is just facilitation of the one hundred percent affordable housing property at the eleven main site. And of course, that's a site that we're going to talk about later in this presentation as well. So these are the major steps to get to that judgment of repose. And why do we want a judgment of repose? Because it creates, one, it simply confirms that we've met our affordable housing obligation to date. And two, it gives us the ability to have immunity from future builder's remedy litigation for as long as possible. That as long as possible is actually just July twenty twenty-five. For every municipality, it's not Milburn specifically, it's just simply the end of the round of affordable housing that we're in. So but that's critical because without that judgment of repose, we could go through the builder's remedy all over again.
Thanks, Beth, and I see Mayor Makin's head, so our hand up.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that it's. We, the address has switched to nine Main Street, not eleven Main Street, because there was a conflict, I guess, with the address itself. So just. Letting everyone know that it's not, it's nine Main Street, just so people are not confused.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay. Originally, it was eleven, but there was that conflict. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, so let's talk about, so that's the background on affordable housing. And why, how we got here today, why we do this in New Jersey. The rest of the presentation, I'm going to focus on what's in your housing element that is specific to Milburn. So one of the things that is embodied within this housing plan and every other one in the state, which is just simply. What what is the affordable housing obligation made up? And it's got two big categories and then a couple subparts. So one, we have the rehabilitation obligation, and that is an estimated number of substandard units occupied by low and moderate income households. In simply an estimate based on census and American Community Survey data. Next, we have a new construction obligation, and that is the number of new affordable units that generally, generally speaking, need to be created within a municipality. And it corresponds to individual rounds. So if you, if you recall, I talked about COA's actions in previous years. What I mean is we had a first round from eighty-seven to ninety. To ninety-three, and then a second round from ninety-three to ninety-nine. That's now collectively referred to as the prior round. You'll see that in in this presentation in the report. Then we have a third round, which embodies all the chaos from COA beginning in nineteen ninety-nine, all the way through the end of the third round, which, like I said, is July twenty twenty-five. But more specifically, what that means for Milburn and what you'll see reflected in the housing plan is three obligations. The first one is that rehabilitation obligation of a hundred and nine units. Next, we have a prior round obligation of two hundred and sixty-one, and then we have a third round obligation of one thousand one hundred and fifteen units. And so let's talk about each of these components. The first. First is the rehabilitation obligation. Like I said, it's a hundred and nine units. There are two things that are going to happen in order for Milburn to meet this obligation. Number one, you're going to participate, you're going to continue to participate, rather, in the Essex County Housing Rehabilitation Program. They run a program for the majority of their municipalities, including Milburn. Our participation will satisfy a part of that. The second is the municipality is obligated to operate a municipal rehabilitation program for rental units only. In both of these programs, they have to be available to eligible households, but you are not required to find a hundred and nine households that participate. Nobody will be knocking on doors saying you are going to get a new roof whether whether you like it or not. It's just simply a requirement to make the program available for these households. The second component of obligation, that new construction obligation. So as I said, it's the prior round of two sixty-one, the third of one thousand one hundred fifteen. I think, as everybody knows, there is simply not enough land in Milburn to meet that entire obligation. And that's okay. COA's rules literally have a mechanism to address. Built-out municipalities like Milburn, and that's called a vacant land adjustment. You guys did this also in your two thousand eighteen housing element and fair share plan. And it's essentially a review of vacant, developable lands and properties that will contribute towards the affordable housing obligation. Determine what is the capacity of those properties. It is an academic exercise. I want to be really clear about that. It's not a literal exercise based on existing zoning or what zoning will be. It's simply an academic exercise that looks at. Various properties in the municipalities. This was done as part of your settlement agreements. And so what your housing element does, it simply reflects the the results of that, which were already subject to the fairness hearing. And the results of the vacant land adjustment results in two figures. The first is the RDP, realistic development potential. That is the municipality's affordable housing obligation. That needs to be met with new units. The remaining is the unmet need, and that's just literally the difference between that total obligation and the RDP. And municipalities are required to implement mechanisms to. Contribute affordable housing units towards that unmet need, but they are not required to create enough affordable housing to satisfy the entire unmet need. It's a little bit of a subjective threshold as to what is, what is adequate and. It's typically, and it was here, one of the major settlement components for any municipality going through this process. And so let's talk. About that RDP a little bit more. Like I said, it's a hundred and fourteen units. So that number. Reflects the vacant, developable land as well as affordable units that would be created in Milburn. And so. This is, this first map is a map of all of the municipality's affordable housing sites, except for group homes. I just have a policy. A lot of firms have policies about not placing the group homes on maps. The addresses, the information is listed in your housing plan, but it's just not simply something that we place on a map. For for a couple of different reasons. And so instead, what this map focuses on are your inclusionary housing properties and your one hundred percent affordable housing site. And so as you look at this map, one of the things that I think is pretty obvious is that the sites are almost exclusively. In, really exclusively, sorry, in non-residential districts as opposed to residential neighborhoods. And so the focus was trying to maintain residential. Character to the extent possible, given the obligations of the municipality. And so this first table is, you'll see this in the plan, and what it does is, it really lays out how we're going to meet this affordable housing obligation. I'm going to go through each of the sites in just a minute, but just so you can see generally. What we have are the majority of units, which are family rental affordable units. We have a couple of special needs group homes, one. From Essex County are the other from Jewish service for developmentally disabled. We are generating affordable housing credits for each of the affordable units at these projects. And then certain projects which meet the meet a rental obligation are also eligible for bonus credits. And so the Upton, for example, is going to is going to meet our rental obligation and will actually generate twenty-nine additional credits beyond simply the thirty units. Now, I will say we've maximized bonus credits, so I would take more if I could. This is the maximum number of bonuses that we can get. So let's go through each site. So the first one is the Upton. As I said before, you guys have already approved that. You did that in two thousand. I believe it's constructed rather in two thousand sixteen. It includes a total of thirty. Affordable units. As I said, these are already constructed and providing housing for households in need. Next, we have the Silverman Group at eighty-five Woodland Avenue. This was that builder's remedy site I referenced, and as you can see from the map, it's it's at the corner of Chatham and Woodlands. This is a property which already received site plan approval, so I imagine it's familiar to a number of you. It's going to include a total of sixty-two affordable units as well, totally, yes, sorry, as well as some medical office space as well. Next, we have the Wells Fargo site. I think this site is also going to be familiar to folks here, since it already received approval. It's a total of fifty-three units as well as three thousand square feet of retail space, and of course, it's got those eight affordable units as well. And this is right in the township's downtown, right on Milburn Avenue at its corners or intersections with Essex Street as well as Douglas Street. And this is our last RDP site, and it's also the only site that has not yet gotten site plan approval. This is the two forty-nine Milburn Avenue, also referred to as the Annie Says property. This site is subject to a rezoning that's already been put in place. And it will permit a total of one hundred and fifty multifamily units, including thirty affordable units. And so, like I said, this is the one RDP site that's not yet been subject to site plan approval. And so here's that table once more, where you can see the Upton, Silverman, Wells Fargo. And the Annie Says property laid out with their affordable units for each of those inclusionary sites, plus the two group homes as well. And so let's talk about the unmet need mechanisms. So once again, here's just a map to to highlight where we're going to be looking. So when we talk about the unmet need, we're going to be looking to. Really to a variety of sites in the town, really from very southern tip to the CMO to northwest area with Woodmont. The first site that I'd like to focus on is the nine Main Street site, is a portion of the DPW facility. The portion towards the eastern end of property, it's about, it's going to be about one point eight acres of the approximate. Four point five acre property. And as many folks may have seen, there's been a developer selected for it. That developer is RPM Development Company. And they will construct seventy-five affordable units as part of a one hundred percent affordable housing development. Project will be funded. By outside funding sources as well as through the municipality's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And this is our first mechanism that is intended to meet our, a portion of our unmet need. The next property is the Woodmont site. This is, as I referenced just a moment ago, up in the northwest portion of the township. This is an interesting property. It's about a twenty-five acre property of which approximately five acres will be subject to multifamily development. Composed of a hundred and ninety-five total units, including thirty-nine affordable units. Now, what makes the site interesting, I think, is the fact that it is. Required to go through an approval process that is separate and apart from the municipality's approval process. So yes, you guys still need to grant site plan approval for it, but. Before that occurs, the developer will go through the Watershed Property Review Board. And will need to secure their approval as well as the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities' approval for construction of the property. The site is currently owned by New Jersey American Water, and because it's owned by by this water agency, because it's associated with a reservoir. That you can see just to the north of the site, it has certain encumbrances to it, and that encumbrance is a requirement to seek. To seek approval from these two state agencies to release the property's encumbrances so that it may be developed. For this purpose, for this inclusionary housing purpose. So while the zoning has been been put in place already, excuse me, while the ordinance has been adopted. Its effectiveness is subject to that Watershed Property Review Board approval. If they get that approval, they'll then have to come before all of you for site plan approval, just like any other property. But I wanted to highlight that. Little bit of interesting distinction about this property. Next, we have the the Country Club. It's located in the C District, Conservation District. This is going to be an overlay district that permits eight units an acre and a twenty percent set aside. And that twenty percent set aside is, just so folks know, that's a common set aside, even though I'm not citing the number, the percent. Twenty percent set aside is typical throughout inclusionary housing sites. There are fifteen percent set asides, and we we have that elsewhere, but. Moving forward through these unmet need zones, you're going to see a twenty percent set aside applied to all properties. We also have the B two district on Morris Turnpike. This too will be subject to a twenty percent set aside, but instead the density will be at eighteen units an acre. We also have the B two district on Milburn Avenue. This will be subject to, again, that twenty percent set aside, but here it will be forty units an acre. And I should also note that this site, this zone, does include the Annie Says property. However, the Annie Says property will be subject to its own site-specific zoning. And so while the site is in the district. Its site-specific zoning will supersede the the zoning changes that we're talking about here today for the rest of the district. Next, we have the B four district. Of course, this is the sort of the traditional downtown of the of the township, and this will have that same twenty percent set aside. But we'll have a lower density at twenty-five units an acre. And then, last but not least, for these zoning changes, we have the CMO district in the southern part of the municipality, and this will have a set aside of twenty percent and an eighteen percent. Excuse me, eighteen unit per acre density. I'm sorry, I have one more. The OR district in the northern part of the township. This will have a density of twenty units an acre and a twenty percent set aside. This is, of course, off of JFK Parkway. And not too far, but not adjacent to the Woodmont property, as well as the Upton, actually. And so now, the last unmet need mechanism is not site-specific. This is referred to as mandatory set aside ordinance, and it's it's an ordinance that's intended to capture any other affordable housing opportunities that may arise in the future. And that really weren't thought about as part of the settlement agreement. And so it means that a twenty percent set aside must be applied to any D one use variance or. D five density variance, all of which will, of course, go through the Board of Adjustment. But it also applies to any rezonings. Or new redevelopment plans that are created. So I want to be really clear. It does not obligate the municipality in any way, shape or form to issue an approval for, say, a use variance. All it requires is, if you give. A variance for that use variance, you must include the twenty percent set aside. Denials are still permitted, in no way conflicting with this ordinance, but if the approval is granted. It's got to include the twenty percent set aside, and of course, as I, I didn't say verbally, but it's on the screen. It, of course, applies to any property that's going to be constructing residential units of five or more for multifamily or detached units. And this twenty percent set aside, the set aside ordinance, does not apply to any of your other affordable housing sites, anything that I've already discussed. Those sites have existing set asides and requirements already in place. This is really for anything new that arises between now and the end of the round. And so that's the, that is the world for which your unmet need mechanisms operate in. It's the the variety of strategies that are necessary. And so what we have here is a housing element that meets your RDP of a hundred and fourteen units using predominantly inclusionary sites. Three of four, which have already received approval, and then a couple of those group homes. And we have a variety of unmet need mechanisms, most of which are zoning change, but we do have the one one hundred percent affordable site at the nine Main Street property. And so the housing plan, I think, obviously includes a lot of additional information, but that's an overview of what's contained in there, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Beth. I so appreciate you kind of walking us through, and I think the last point that you made especially. While there's a lot of material contained in the the plan for us to review, you know, as the board over the coming weeks, I think that was a great, helpful overview. If there are any immediate questions, I think we are open to that, but we do want to be conscious of our. Our waiting application and the fact that we do have time to to continue to digest it and and ask questions. Before any action will be taken by the board. So are there any sort of quick responses or questions from from tonight's slides? Mister Bear.
Just seeing if Ed was still here. Beth, I don't know if you can answer this question, but take a shot if you'd like to. If the adoption of the. Housing element. Results in potentially necessary changes to the rest of the master plan, so we have consistency throughout the master plan. results in potentially necessary changes to the rest of the master plan, so we have consistency throughout the master plan, should we be addressing that as part of this action? Or I kind of want your your experience on this. Do planning boards typically wait to make any additional modifications to the master plans such that they, there is a comprehensive review and acceptance that occurs? The housing element's a big piece. It could could result in potential changes throughout the master plan. So in my opinion, it's it's important that we be comprehensive in our in our review. So what is your experience?
So it's a good question, and I have to say, I see a lot of different strategies from municipalities. And I think it depends on on a couple of things. It probably depends on their budgets in part, depends on their capacity to to hold the meetings, to do to do the work. And I think it also depends a little bit on their interest in planning, if I'm honest. So I think that it's a good idea for municipalities to take what's included in the housing element and to review its other master plan elements and other policies that it might have in place against it to look for consistency, see what's consistent and what isn't, and what changes might be necessary in the other elements to bring them to to consistency with what's in the housing plan. I would encourage every municipality to do that, because there may be, there may, this may be a catalyst for other zoning changes or for other use changes, even within the list of permitted uses as as new housing perhaps changes market demands or changes the character of an area, or perhaps it has implications for road infrastructure, just as an example. So I would encourage the township to to go ahead and take a look at its master plan and other policies for for what updates and upgrades may be necessary. I do want to encourage folks to to look at this as two separate processes. That's that's the only thing that raises concern for me. It is a good idea, but I want to be very strong in the sense that the housing element is the only thing that is required. And so while I think it's a good thing to seek this consistency, I hate to say it, but it's not required.
Okay, thank you. Deborah, I see you have your hand raised as well.
Thank you. Hi, Beth. So I'm pretty new to the planning board, so I just want to try to understand something that I think I heard you say, but I'm not positive. So when you were talking about the mandatory set aside, you said that if we give the variance, we're required to set aside a certain part for affordable housing, yes? But it sounded-
Yeah, based on if the certain conditions are met, yes.
Okay, but it sounded like you said that, let me just see, I wrote it down. That we, I I got the impression that we didn't have as much choice about whether or not we grant variances for the unmet need stuff that's already been discussed, that we have more leeway with the mandatory set aside that's new, but that we don't have a lot of leeway in terms of whether or not we granted variance for the unmet need stuff that includes, you know, the DPW site and Woodmont and Canoe Brook, et cetera. So I just want to make sure I understand what you were saying.
Yeah, let me review that. So there there are two separate issues. The mandatory set aside ordinance is only for sites, let me put it this way, is only applies to sites that I did not talk about today. So when I talk about the mandatory set aside in terms of variances, those variant, the only variances that are applicable or would trigger that mandatory set aside ordinance are actually those that would be before the Board of Adjustment. I don't know who here is my, is the Board of Adjustment rep.
He's not here tonight, but-
Oh, okay. So if there's a use variance for a D-one use variance or a density variance, a use density variance, those variances would trigger the mandatory set aside if they're also for a residential development application. So if you are in a, let's say you're in a single-family district, you're a developer, and you pick up a couple of lots, and you want to build a twenty-unit apartment building, just as an example. You would go to the Board of Adjustment, you would seek a use variance from your Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment can grant the application or not based on the variance criteria, just the regular municipal land use law variance criteria. If they find the application does not meet the variance criteria, that's okay. If they find that it does meet the variance criteria and they're going to grant the use variance, then they must apply the twenty percent set aside. So they can deny it if that's appropriate, but if they approve it, they must include the twenty percent set aside. And so that's how the mandatory set aside ordinance works. Your unmet need mechanisms, like the nine Main Street site or perhaps one of the properties in your B-two district, those zones are going to be subject to their to to the zoning standards which permit this inclusionary housing. The ordinances which make the zoning changes I described, like the eighteen units an acre or forty units an acre, depending on where you are. Those ordinances will set the residential density. They'll already require the affordable housing set aside, and they'll have standards in place that would presumably allow for that inclusionary zoning to to occur. So the board is, the planning board in those sites will not be tasked at assigning an affordable housing set aside because of the mandatory set aside. You may require, you will have to require an affordable housing set aside, but that's because it's going to be in that zone district's requirements. Is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and again, being mindful of our time and also thank you, Beth, for your time this evening with us. So as we discussed earlier in the meeting, the intention was to, for us to receive this presentation, again, a lot of information to digest, to review in the plan, to follow up with questions in the intervening weeks, just to make sure we, as board members, feel comfortable that we understand all the elements that are included in the plan. And also, thank you, Dan, for raising its implications on the broader master plan that we have. So we are looking tonight to set a hearing date to, again, as we noted earlier, I think we have some more attendees at the future hearing date. That would be the opportunity for public input, public comment, before the planning board takes any action to adopt the fair share housing element plan. So in order to do so, I guess Susan and I would defer to you, as I don't see it as joined us. Do we do that through a motion second and roll call vote?
Yes, I I would recommend that, and specifically for setting the public hearing on plan for June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Excellent, thank you. So that said, I will make a motion for the planning board to set a hearing date for the third round housing element and fair share plan for the township of Milburn for June fifteenth at seven thirty PM meeting.
Yes, and the link would all be provided.
Via Zoom, the link would be provided in the agenda, as is always done. That's a motion we would need a second to move.
Second.
Thank you, Dan. Eileen, you're, oh, there you go.
Yes, I'm Halpert.
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
SuJahtha Sean?
She's muted.
Yes.
Okay.
Diane Egglow?
Dane.
Daniel Bear?
Say it again.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, as well. Thank you. So this matter will be, again, discussed, open for board discussion and public comment before an action is taken on June fifteenth. Thank you, and thank you.
Just one thing, if board members have questions or concerns that they'd like to address, I mean, you're always welcome to ask it during the during the public hearing on the fifteenth, certainly. But if there's anything that you want to chat with me about or something that you'd like to ask a question about prior, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to have any of those conversations with anybody that like to to chat about affordable housing. I'm always available, so.
Thank you for that offer. And just as a reminder to all members of the board, if you were to reach out, just please, you would have to reach out individually. We can't circulate emails as as always, but but thank you, Beth, for that offer. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate that. With that said, we'll move on in tonight's agenda. Our application twenty-two zero zero one, Cartley Associates. This is for preliminary and final major site plan approval at three forty-eight Milburn Avenue. Mr. Sersilo, welcome back. And if you would just let us know who who we should bring in of your professionals or witnesses. We can't hear you, but we can see you.
How about now?
Good, but we're echoing.
How about now? How about now?
Much better.
There we go.
Rich Keller over, I thought I saw your architect, but now, unless he logged on in a different-
I I also want to advise that under the name of Robert Schultz is my fact witness, Scott Redler. He's sharing Mr. Schultz's laptop.
Okay.
Okay.
And your architect is? Oh, J. N. Mar, okay, yeah.
Joe, Joe Marchese.
Marchese, I saw it differently before, I don't know why. Okay, so I have Rich, Robert Schultz. Rich was here, where did he go? Rich Keller?
He's back in.
There we go, let's try this again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
At least we want to, want to hear you something.
Okay, I think that's everybody.
Can you guys hear me? Scott Redler, not Robert Schultz.
We can't see you.
Cannot see you, but at the at the point when you are going to speak or provide testimony, we will need you to have your camera on and to be sworn in as such.
Oh.
Beautiful.
My camera died, is that going to be a problem?
Uh, Mr. Sersilo, is he providing testimony or is your architect?
That's my architect.
All right, let me see if I can boot something up while we're working.
That'd be great, or worst case, potentially joining via phone. If that might be enough.
Because my other computer was, we're having a storm coming through the area here, and I was getting feedback left and right. But let me see if I can get on the other end.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sersilo, I don't know if you want to begin?
Sure, thank you very much. Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, my name is Anthony Sersilo. I'm with the Law Office of Levitt and Sersilo in Milburn Township on behalf of Cartley Associates LLC. This is an application for preliminary and final site plan approval submitted by the property owner, Cartley Associates, in which Robert and Christine Schultz are the sole members or owners on behalf of an existing tenant on the second floor known as T-three Trading Group. The property is situated in the central business B-four zoning district and is commonly known as three forty-eight Milburn Avenue. The purpose of this application is to provide privacy space for T-three Trading Group by way of a third-story addition of seven hundred five square feet directly above its second-floor space. Two variances are needed, one loading space and three parking spaces. However, this property is fully developed, and there are currently no onsite parking spaces and no loaded. We also require four waivers, requirement of the environmental impact statement, waiver of storm-water runoff provisions, and two checklist items identified as circulation plans, letter B, and facilities plan, letter L and M. We are in receipt of your professional reports, and to the extent necessary, our witnesses will address them. I have architect Joe Marchese, T-three trading representative Scott Redler, and professional engineer and planner Richard Keller. I filed my proof of service on May twenty-seventh with Ms. David. Madam Chairwoman, I'm ready to call my first witness, if I may.
That is fine. I am going to channel my inner Ed Buzyak and ask if we can begin with the waiver requirement for the EIS. We like to take care of that specific checklist item first. So if that is possible for you to direct when calling your first witness.
Then I call Richard Keller first temporarily.
Okay, do you swear from the testimony about to give tonight be the truth, whole truth, come by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name for the record.
Richard Keller, K.E.L.L.E.R.
Mr. Keller, please give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications in the fields of professional planning and professional engineering.
Certainly, I'm a licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering with a declared concentration in water resources and environmental engineering, and that is from Rutgers University. I also hold a Master's in Architecture with a concentration in urban planning and design, and that is from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, where I was also an adjunct professor in the architecture program for about, architecture and planning program for about eleven years. I have appeared before this board, the Board of Adjustment, all told about a hundred and twelve boards throughout the state of New Jersey as both planner and engineer. I've also provided planning consultation services to the borough of Caldwell and engineering services to the planning board and Board of Adjustment for the township of Long Hill for approximately three years. My brand-new licenses arrived about a month ago, so they're all in good standing. And I look forward to returning back for this board again.
Madam Chairwoman, I I move that he be qualified as experts in the fields of professional planning and engineering.
Great, thank you. We will accept Mr. Keller as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Rich, kindly go over the four groups of waivers.
Certainly, as indicated, we need a waiver of the environmental impact statement, section five oh nine of the ordinance. The site is fully developed, there is one hundred percent coverage. There is no increase in the impervious area or lot coverage. There's no impact on storm or sanitary surffles. There are no freshwater wetlands, deep slopes, et cetera. I would point out, because of that, this board has regularly approved waivers of the environmental impact statement because there is no environmental impact. I would point out, the same waiver was granted in the two thousand nine and two thousand nineteen site plan applications for the same property when similar modifications were being made. We also, it's debatable, I know we've noticed for a waiver of section five twenty-five, which is the storm-water runoff provisions. You could view it as we're asking for a waiver or that we're not subject to that section, either one. We're not a major project as defined by either our ordinance or the DEP. There is no increase in impervious area and therefore no increase in storm-water runoff. There is no increase in impervious area and therefore no increase in stormwater runoff. Therefore, no stormwater management is required. So whether we need a waiver for it or it just doesn't require us to do anything. Either way, we've requested it just to be on the conservative side. And then with regard to checklist items under circulation on the on the site plan checklist under the section of circulation, item number B or a letter B that calls for curbs, driveway structures and signs within one hundred feet of the site to be shown on the survey. We show within about fifty feet of the of the site. Really just to cut down on on cost of surveying and the fact that we're not affecting any of those areas and what we show is more than adequate for this board to judge the the site plan and variance applications for you, in our opinion. Under the facilities plan, just to be deemed complete, we did ask for waivers of item L and M. L is for solid waste disposal methods and M is for handling of recyclable materials. Because nothing is shown on the site plan because at the time it was all handled through private carding and off-site facilities. We did not show anything. Therefore, we asked for a waiver, and we thought we would address that in testimony this evening. And there will be some testimony by the architect that we actually will make some accommodations for the handling of recyclable materials because this building does share dumpsters for the purposes of refuse with adjoining lots fifteen and sixteen, as well as cardboard recycling, but not glass and cans. So the architect will go over the provisions that were made. So we technically requested waivers of those so we could provide testimony. And in this case, some modifications to the architecture for those two items. So those are the waivers that have been requested.
Thanks, Mr. Keller. I wanted to know if you are in receipt or certainly Mr. Sersillo mentioned he was of the Environmental Commission, Milburn Environmental Commission letter. It's an email, and if you either would characterize it or summarize it or respond to it, but.
I can go through that. That was from Reed current Reed Chem. It was dated May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two. And essentially, the substantive comments start with the third paragraph. Does the change for the use for the addition from additional space supporting the fur operation to apartments change the board's opinion whether the EIS should still be granted? I think that's referring to the that may have been referring to the resolution from two thousand nineteen because that's when the use was changed to convert into residences. So really not applicable to this application. And then related to the two thousand nineteen planning board application, a waiver of the the statement is that a waiver of the EIS was subject to the applicant gaining approval from Essex County Planning Board and Hudson Essex Passaic Soil Conservation District, if applicable. However, that's actually not a strict reading of the the waiver. The waiver was not granted dependent upon the applicant receiving Essex County Planning Board or Hudson Essex Passaic Soil Conservation District approval. That was a separate condition. So under under the section of the ordinance on that resolution from two thousand nineteen on page four, section item number eight, the board are reading from the from the the second half of the paragraph. The board finds that as the site is fully developed and no exterior improvements, except for roofing, door and window modifications are proposed, the waiver request will be granted. So it's not granted subject to. And then as the standard conditions for any approval, which appear start on page five, item number four is that in general, the applicant shall submit applications to and obtain approvals from Essex County Planning Board and Hudson Essex Passaic Soil Conservation District, if applicable. And that's really kind of blanket language. H E P S C D or Hudson Essex Passaic S C D approval was not required because there was less than five thousand square feet of open soil disturbance. So it's not required to get H E P S C D approval. And Essex County Planning Board, I'm ninety-nine percent sure it got approval. That would really pretty much be a rubber stamp because we are not changing any curb openings onto the county road, which is Milburn Avenue, and we weren't impacting any stormwater facilities in any of these applications. So it would, I'm pretty sure it was either they would have waived it or they would have approved it, but I don't have any. I don't have any hard proof of that. However, I would point out the EIS was not subject. Those were general conditions of the resolution. The next paragraph, it says the two thousand nineteen resolution noted that planned improvements would include roof mounted solar panels. That was actually the two thousand and nine resolution. And I was actually a part of that application, but that would have been the architect's testimony. I do not know whether solar panels were put in and then were removed as part of the two thousand nineteen application for the apartments. I do know that currently there are no, to my knowledge, there are no solar panels on the roof. So that's really in either an enforcement issue as to the two thousand nine resolution, how those either got there and and went away. I'm uncertain, and I can't offer testimony to that, but I will say that is really immaterial to the application we have before you tonight. There is no, there is no planned expansion of the of the facility, and there's no planned solar panels as part of this application. The last item is certainly the the applicant has no problem in in recycling, making every attempt to recycle old materials from the site and separated to and sent for proper handling. So that's something that I'm glad to see that most builders are doing now because it's actually financially profitable. So we certainly would agree to that. But I don't think any of the comments really substantively change my opinion that this this project has no negative impact, environmental impact as a function of the proposed modifications to the building. And again, we respectfully ask for a waiver to be granted as it was in two thousand nine and two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. I appreciate you addressing those items. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Keller with respect to the request for waiver? Let's just begin with the environmental impact. I know we touched on a few other waivers, but let's start with this one. Okay, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the waiver request for the environmental impact statement? Diane, you're I just if we can hear you say it. Sorry.
Okay, I will make that motion.
Thank you. I will second.
Guest on helper?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
Sue Jaffa Sean?
Yes.
Diane Egglow?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Didn't hear you, Dan.
Yes.
That's all?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. So your waiver request for the EIS is approved. We can carry on. So if I heard you correctly, it sounds like there will be some further testimony on some of the other waiver requests.
That is correct.
Okay, and I think we can address those throughout unless Mr. Buzyak, do you prefer that we address all of them upfront? Okay, if we kind of cover it throughout the duration of the testimony.
The only ones I'm I am concerned about are the the waivers of the two checklist items because checklist items have to be either fulfilled for the application to be complete and to go forward or be waived by the board. And I think that for the there were two, if I understood correctly from the checklist, one was the circulation plan and Mr. Keller's testimony was that it typically involves curbs, drainage, structures and so forth within a hundred feet on the plans. They showed about fifty feet as opposed to a hundred feet. And his testimony was that there was no impact, so they did not want to submit anything further beyond what they've done. So I think the board can act on that now. The second one of the checklist was the facilities specifically solid waste disposal and recyclables. He talked a little bit about both of those. I was a little bit confused about the solid waste. I assume that there is going to be plans and there are plans that and arrangements made already for solid waste disposal from the site, and those will be continued. So it's really not a waiver. You're just suggesting that you didn't want to submit anything further. You'll testify about that. Is that correct, Mr. Keller and Mr. Sersillo?
That is correct.
Yes, Mr. Buzyak.
Okay, so why don't we do this? I would ask the board to vote on the circulation plan because they they've submitted a a plan that doesn't fully comply with the requirements, but it does have information within approximately fifty feet. So I would ask the board, someone move to grant that checklist waiver separately, and we'll deal with the other one separately.
Thanks, Ed. I move to approve the checklist waiver for item B on circulation plan L.
I'll second.
Guest on helper?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
To Jaffa Sean?
Yes.
Diane Egglow?
Yes.
Daniel Bear? That's all.
Yes.
And the second one with regard to solid waste and recyclables, I think the 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 motion should be to to waive the submission of the materials for the checklist purposes, but subject to the testimony that will be provided by the engineer and other experts.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Guest on helper?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Sue Jaffa Sean?
Yes.
Diane Egglow?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes.
So that leaves just the stormwater management waiver issued, and Mr. Keller's testimony was that he wasn't quite sure whether there was really a need for a waiver or just a non-applicability. I think we can handle that as part of the ultimate approval. So why don't we just go forward? Mr. Sersillo can call his first witness, and we'll we'll handle that at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Buzyak. Thank you, board members. I call Joseph Marchese.
Okay, Ms. Marchese, if you just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, whole truth, come by the truth?
I do.
Your name for the record, spell your name, please.
Joseph Marchese, M A R C H E S E.
Mr. Marchese, please give the board the benefit of your credentials and background in the fields of architecture.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I am an architect with a practice in Morris County, New Jersey. I graduated from NJIT with a Bachelor's of Architecture in nineteen ninety-three. I apprenticed and then passed the architectural registration exam in two thousand. I opened my own practice in two thousand two. I have appeared before boards of adjustment in many towns, Chatham, Madison, Wayne, Milburn, and other towns.
Great, and your license is still current?
I'm sorry. Yes, my license is still current.
Madam Chairwoman, that he he be qualified as an expert in architecture.
We will accept you as such. Thank you.
Mr. Marchese, can you please explain your plans to the board?
Yes. The proposed project consists of a seven hundred and five third story addition over an existing two-story structure as the professionals building C. The proposed addition is approximately twenty-three foot eight by twenty-nine foot wide by twenty-five, twenty-nine foot eleven deep. It aligns with the current second floor structure below. The addition is to serve as additional space for the current second floor tenant. We are creating three private offices, a conference room, a meeting area, a new ADA toilet room, and a reception area. The current height of the two-story structure is approximately twenty-two feet, six and a half inches high. The proposed addition is approximately ten inches, ten feet higher. The result is in a new building height of approximately thirty-two feet, six and a half inches. And this is to align this, this is to align the new proposed structure with the existing structure, building B and the rear part of building C. The current access to the second floor is from an exterior covered metal stair. The rest of the stair is open underneath. Initially, we investigated designs to create access to the new third third floor of the internally from the second floor. Given the small square footage of the space, any stair design generally reduce the viability of both spaces. We concluded that maintaining the exterior stair access to the existing second floor and proposed third floor was appropriate. To this end, we propose to switch the stair entrance from the Milburn Avenue side to the rear of the building. This proposed stair will be of steel construction enclosed with architecturally aesthetic insulated metal panels, a neutral color that will complement the existing building. And in an effort to make the right side feel more open, we were not going to enclose the area under the stair, just the walls, the roof and the underside of the stair itself. We propose the facade of the Milburn Avenue elevation. Do you have a brick veneer with a color that matches the existing brick veneer? We have three new windows that align with the windows on the second floor. They will have the same trim as the windows on the second floor. I had read a comment, the the existing cornice appears to be wrapped in aluminum to cover up wood or a fabricated cord cornice. Initially, we are proposing to modify it into a more pleasing line with a metal roof. If during construction we discover that we can modify the cornice, we would like to remove it completely and have a flush facade. I think this will work well with the adjoining structures. In thinking about sustainability, we plan on using low or no VOC paints or carpets. The insulated metal panels also work towards this. While not visible, the roof will be of a light color as to minimize the heat signature of the area. The overall construction will allow us to insulate the addition above required, above requirements. And in every opportunity, we will use local suppliers to cut down on emissions. Based on some of the comments from the professional ports, we are we are proposing some changes to the plans presented before the board. The portion of the new stair going from the second floor to to the grade will be enclosed. This area will have an exterior access from the right side of the building down the alley and will contain receptacles for recycling materials only. We will have, oh, we were proposing to match the existing vinyl siding on the right side of the building. But after also reading comments, I think that changing that to the same stucco that matches the back portion of building C will be the better better solution. It'll help integrate everything and make it more cohesive.
Mr. Marchese, I apologize for interrupting. I know you are having some technical issues with joining from your computer, but is somebody presenting any of the figures, like anything that because you now you're giving testimony that you're changing things from what we have in front of us. I just want to make sure we're all able to sort of fully comprehend and understand. And I just.
No, I'm not. I'm sorry. I'll try and.
I'm just thinking sometimes the visual is is much more helpful to come with the narration. And if you're going to introduce the exhibits, we'll just want to number them as you pull them in.
I'm sorry, yes.
No, no need to apologize. I'm just, I think it would help me for sure. Hopefully other members of the board as well.
I got most of this, but I can't actually excellent access my files unless I'm missing something.
Joe, if helpful, I can I can. Joe, if helpful, I can share your drawings. I think I have your latest drawing, and you can just talk about them and tell me which one you want to show.
Yes, Rich, thank you very much.
All right, let me I believe I have the latest ones here. Where you want to go?
Sheet A3. On the side elevation in this back portion over, yes, over the
Sorry, I apologize for jumping in on you. We just want to label this our exhibit number.
Well, Martha, A1, this is sheet A3 of the architectural plans and the date.
April 25th of April. Thank you.
So in that area that Rich is pointing out, down under here, this is the area we're going to enclose to hold the recyclables. They'll be stored on this face, and the bins will be contained behind it. All along the rest of, from the second floor, from wherever the vinyl siding starts all the way up to the top, we are proposing to change that to the stucco that is currently in the back portion of the building. And under the stair and along that side wall, we are going to add three wall sconces to help illuminate the area there. And then additionally, a wall sconce on the rear elevation and a wall sconce over the door leading into that stair. Those fixtures will be on a dusk till dawn, will operate from dusk till dawn. I do have to, there was a misplacement of windows facing the rear. The four windows on the third floor are actually on the second floor. The window on the second floor, the single new egress window, will be on the third floor. That's replacing the door that's being closed in by the new addition. The window on the side on the second floor will be removed, and that will be filled in. And all of these modifications and just the general construction will comply to all the current adopted building codes.
I have no further questions of Mr. Marchese.
Okay, thank you. Any members of the board have questions regarding that testimony for the architect? Great, and, oh, I'm sorry, Gueston, go ahead.
Yeah, just though I know everything is going to be code compliant and everything like that, looking at the layout of the new third floor, there's an ADA toilet. Do they need ADA accessibility of some sort, or can it be just through stairs?
I don't think they need an elevator is what you're
Yeah, that's what it would be, yeah, was implying. No, enough of that, okay.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to potential questions from the public, I just wanted to confirm where there were any of the reports. Did any of the professional ports have any questions that Mr. Marchese would be the appropriate one to answer or respond to? And it may be no, but I just want to make sure we don't have to let you go and then bring you back.
If I could just, I was just going to ask Grant Pedo. If you considered any additional penetration on the side elevation at third floor, just given, you know, the amount of light in the new addition, if there is an opportunity to put another window, especially considering you're moving it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's too close to the property line, so it's not available code-wise.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Ms. Nevis, go ahead, Deborah.
A question, I don't know if you can answer this. Who is this office space going to be for the tenants who are already on the second floor, or are they adding additional people to this office space?
I believe Mr. Redler and Mr. Keller are going to address that question.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from members of the board? Okay, any members of the public, if you have questions for Mr. Marchese based upon his testimony, just any questions, now would be the time to use the raise hand function from Zoom, and if so, we could call you over to ask any questions. Okay, seeing none, we welcome you, Mr. Scisillo, to continue.
I call Mr. Scott Redler.
Okay, sir, if you just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, hold true, know the truth?
Yes.
Your name for the record, spelling your name, please.
Scott Redler, S-C-O-T-T-R-E-D-L-E-R.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Redler, can you describe the nature of the business of T3 Trading Group? And from that one, I'd like to just say T3, and that'll be an abbreviation.
Right, so
Okay, well, T3 is training, training and technology, and what we the, I would say the majority of our business is trading. We all, so we trade proprietarily, most of our traders are licensed traders. We don't handle individuals' money. We most of them trade the firm's money, the partner's money, and we also train individuals in the country around the world how to approach the market tactically on many timeframes. And we also sometimes are correspondents to different media networks, whether it's Fox Business, CNBC, or Bloomberg. That's pretty much the business.
What's your position with T3?
I'm the chief strategic officer. I'm also the founding partner. You know, we merged back in 2008. We've been in, you know, business ever since. I've been in the markets since 1998 and been with them from the get-go. And I'm also a trader, and I'm also the, pretty much the face of the company when it comes to the media.
Where does T3 currently conduct business?
So T3 has many satellite offices. Our main office was in New York City. We had a 12-year lease that ended within the past year. We also have offices in Florida, the east coast of Long Island, in Atlanta, in California. And then you also have remote traders from across the country that are associated members of T3, but don't necessarily need to be in our facilities.
What about at 348 Milburn Avenue?
Okay, so at 348 Milburn Avenue, Mr. Schultz built the trading firm for his family, for his son, Ashley. And it had nothing to really do with myself or T3. They just opened up an office, which some people do, and use our T3 economies of scale. And I just coincidentally moved to town right around the same time, and we all, you know, became friends. So I just came to the office on a Friday because it was very convenient instead of going to the, you know, the city office. And also it helped them build some credibility in the New Jersey office because they were new. About a year or two later, you know, Robert's family decided to just really focus on outerwear and said to me, would I like to take over their operation that they built and just sign a lease? And I think that was somewhere around 2018, and we said sure. So we took over their existing space that had room for about 10 traders, which at the time was the majority of the people that were there. We came in with about five or six traders, including me. And more recently, since our office in New York City, we terminated the lease and we were thinking about, you know, what to do next. After COVID, a lot of our, you know, a few of our traders left the New Jersey office. So we, instead of us leaving the New Jersey office based on the new use we needed, we wanted to stay, but in order to stay, two of the individuals that came over that weren't traders were our human resources and compliance, and both are female employees. And in order to have a compliance officer, to have privacy and trade support that privacy, they actually need a closed-in office. They're not traders. Traders need computer space, and they like open, they like to communicate. Compliance and and trade support need to be on a phone, which would then interfere with the trader's business. So we spoke to Mr. Schultz, and he said, I'd like to see if maybe we could expand upstairs so we can get you another bathroom for the female employees and get some private offices so you guys could stay here and conduct your business in the short-hills office the way you've been doing for the past three, four years for the next however many years that is, which hopefully will be, you know, a long time coming.
What days of the week are T3 open?
I would say Monday through Friday. I might stop in because I live in town on a Saturday just to, you know, do a little research. But really, Monday through Friday, I'm the first one in the office at 6:00. Most come in usually around 8:30, and we're done by 5:00. But, you know, rarely the weekends, so that's the majority of the time.
And is, what is the frequency of you or T3 booking clients into the office?
I would say rarely, never happens. You know, we have subscribers around the world, but it's all done through newsletters and via Skype. Maybe once every few months, someone would want to come visit and have lunch with me and just see me face-to-face. But other than that, we rarely have any kind of visitors coming to the office.
And tell the board, why does T3 need additional space?
We probably don't need additional space, and we could fit in the existing office, but we have changed the jobs of some of the individuals that will be there. Instead of just having traders, we now have human resources and trade support and legal that need a private office. So they need their own office instead of an open facility. So they need to be on the phone, they need to be private, and two of our employees are female, so we need to have a female bathroom for them besides the one bathroom that we have on the second court, the second floor. So we just need a different type of space to go alongside the space that we order, you know, have as well in order to make sure we could run efficiently.
How many employees do you currently have at T3 in Milburn?
I would say, on average, six.
And after the addition, how many employees will you have in Milburn?
I would say the same average of six.
And what is the maximum number of employees on site at one time?
I don't think we really have had more than six. Like, there has been, when we took over T3, there was room for 12, and we've never had, we never fulfilled the space. We always had less employees for the space and, you know, paid our lease and just loved the space. The reason why we had kept it was because I live in the town. So my my CEO has said numerous times to me, you know, we could go to other towns and not pay top-notch money for a lease, you know, why don't we just do that? And I'm like, well, I live in town. You know, I coach all the different sports. I like to be close by, and the traders love it here. We like to go out in town, whether it's a deli, whether it's, you know, the restaurants, and, you know, I'd rather pay a little bit more, you know, to stay in short hills. And since I am, you know, somewhat important within the company, he says, okay, as long as you, you know, make it happen and keep the relationship up with the Schultz's, you know, I'll do whatever it needs as long as we could provide the space and what we need for our employees to be compliant as they're all registered and, you know, we're a registered FINRA broker-dealer, so we just got to make sure that everything is done, you know, by the book.
Now, Mr. Redler, is there a basement that you have access to in the building?
I don't know. I've never been in a basement. Is there one?
So you, so you don't use the basement?
No, I don't use the basement.
And can you talk about the frequency of incoming deliveries to T3? Because one of the variances is a loading space.
I don't think that we need much. We get water, you know, water delivery. I think paper every now and then for the the printers, but there's no real, we don't, you know, we, our computers have been the same computers that we've had for, you know, as long as we've been there, and I rarely, there's some mail here and there, just, you know, but not, you know, there's no frequency of deliveries that I know of.
And how does T3 handle trash removal?
Well, it's very infrequently also, but, you know, when the trash fills up, there are some trash cans underneath the stairwell, so sometimes we would go there, or sometimes there are three or four or five dumpsters that I believe, you know, the Chinese restaurant, Moonshine, all them share, so sometimes we put it in the dumpster. But it's a very low-trash type of business where really it's just some plastic cups from traders or employees drinking water, or maybe yeah, so there's really not that much trash. So I would think the dumpster here and there, or if there's an open trash can below that, I do think is assigned to Schultz.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Resley. Madam Chair, we'll know for the questions of this witness.
Okay, thanks. Open it to the board, and Mr. Perry, see your hands up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Beth. Trying to understand the relevance of this testimony. Not that it was irrelevant. Scott, your testimony is very good, but I don't understand the relevance of the testimony with respect to the project, because what this project is is an addition of 700 square feet of commercial space on top of a building owned by the Schultz's. And while I recognize that your business is there today, your business may not be there a year from now or two years. I don't know. You don't know. But we don't know, but we have to take that in consideration. And I also recognize the fact that the conversations have been that they're building you this additional space, but anybody could be, any commercial use could be using this space. So what I'm going to ask is that when Mr. Keller gives his testimony, Mr. Keller needs to address, in my opinion, Mr. Keller needs to address this project as additional 700-plus square feet of commercial space in this zone and what the B4 zone stipulates for 700 pies additional square feet as opposed to Mr. Redler's business in there. Because again, any business someday could use this space. So I'm assuming that the parking demand would probably one per 250 square feet, whatever, but I'm going to ask, when Mr. Keller gives his testimony, that he also addresses this as not just a space for a particular use, but by the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Other questions for Mr. Redler based on his testimony?
And do you want me to address that, or is there someone better suited for that? Is that
No, I, you know, it's, no, it has nothing to do with you. You're there, but when we typically
Although, the thing, the thing is, if they don't do this and build the additional space, I probably couldn't be there.
That's, I understand. I understand. And again, it has nothing to do with you and your particular, your particular business, but it has to do with the way that we look at applications. And I appreciate your testimony. It was a good testimony, but when we evaluate the addition of 700 square feet, any, we have to look at that, if anybody uses that space, not just you. So, so I'm going to ask Mr. Keller to address it that way, because that's the way the planning board needs to look at an application as per the zoning ordinance for the B4 district. That's all.
I get it.
Thank you. Gueston?
Yeah, just an easy one. Where do you and your employees currently park?
I, I'm the first one there, so I currently park in Mr. Schultz's space. Our other employees have a permit, so I really don't know exactly where they, where they park, but I believe that they've applied and they paid the $250 for Um, so I really don't know exactly where they, where they park, but I believe that they've applied and they paid the $250 for where it is. I've, I've been there since 2017. I never had to pay for a spot because, uh, Mr. Schultz has, I think, two and hasn't needed them. So, and he hasn't been there. He's been, you know, further uptown. So I've just been parking there. And if we did need to get, you know, an additional two or three spaces, you know, and pay for them based on the 700 additional square feet, we have no problem doing that. Um, it's just up to whatever the, you know, whatever is necessary. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I have one question myself. Um, I look, you know, what the plan looked like, I say the bathroom, the offices, and it looks like a, a small conference room, I guess, to again, have privacy or if you have potential meetings. Um, is there like to be a kitchenette or a sink or a fridge? You know, you're mentioning having a separate bathroom, you know, for female employees. I'm just wondering how they would use, you know, the fact that otherwise they'd have to go outside to get back in to potentially a fridge.
Um, and we have a fridge on the second floor, which is very useful, you know, put some beverages in and stuff. Um, I don't know in the architect what they have for that, you know? Um, they do have, that's probably a question for, for Joe as far as whether there is, um, you know, a sink. And then we don't have one on, on the second floor. Um, so I, you know, I, I would think they make, you know, tea or stuff. There would definitely be something there that's accessible for them, but I would, I would figure that most of the time they'd probably go into town and grab a sandwich and, um, you know, and go to the restaurants and stuff versus, uh, having, there definitely wouldn't be cooking there or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the board? Mr. Rather, okay. If any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Rather, based on the testimony that he gave, now would be the time to use the raise hand function. Okay, seeing none. Uh, Mr. Serso, I turn it back to you.
I'd like to recall Mr. Keller, please. Mr. Keller, can you tell the board what you've prepared and what you've reviewed in, in anticipation of your testimony tonight?
Yes, uh, we reviewed the architect's plans. We prepared the survey of the property. Uh, this is actually, I've surveyed this property since the mid nineties. Um, and we, uh, we participated in the 2009 site plan, um, which was the expansion of, uh, Mr. Schultz's, uh, fur business at the time. Uh, we prepared the base survey. I didn't participate in the 2019, but we prepared the survey, uh, for that application. I've also reviewed, reviewed the master plan, um, the vision plan, uh, as well as the zoning ordinance, uh, and the, uh, the professional, um, review letters we received, uh, as part of the application.
And can you tell the board what variances, uh, are required for this application?
Certainly. Uh, we need two variances. The variance is for parking and that is, uh, from section 607.2F. Uh, because we're adding an additional 705 square feet of office space that generates a net increase of three spaces. So the current use needs three spaces. Uh, when they double that space, it goes up to six. So there's a net increase in three. Uh, no parking is available on site. Um, there has been periodic, in all these site plan applications, uh, there's never been expressed as there's any parking on site because there's an easement that allows us to park on the parking lot area behind the property on lot 16, which is behind, um, the moonshine as well as the, uh, uh, Ms. Lynn and the, uh, uh, Rockin' Joes, et cetera. So there has, and then with, um, some changes during COVID and the use back there, as well as, um, storage of, uh, of material after, uh, Ida, the, um, the parking has moved around a little bit. And recently there have been a couple of cars that have been sneaking onto the back of the site. And in the last 10 days, actually, the neighboring, um, the neighboring landlord actually striped a couple of spaces. But there's never historically been any parking. It's always been in the alleyway in the parking lot, in the parking area behind us. And as indicated, Mr. Schultz does have a spot back there, since he moved his fur business up into, uh, the B3 district in Short Hills. Um, he doesn't use that space that, that he has sort of traditionally grabbed as part of that easement arrangement. And that's the, uh, the space that, uh, that the managing partner from T3 has been using. Um, but in terms of the, uh, the parking, there is no parking on site. So we're, we're upping the parking requirement by three. We need variance relief for that. Um, there's also a variance from 607.1. Um, the bump up in square footage, the 705 triggers the need for a, uh, loading space. There's no loading space on the site. There's no space to put a loading, uh, space, a loading zone on the property. Um, what's unique about this property is that they actually can get large deliveries or move-ins and move-outs uh, through the back alleyway, through the, uh, through the easement arrangement, uh, between the three lots. Um, otherwise UPS, FedEx, that tends to come through the front door as they do throughout the downtown otherwise. So this is, uh, uh, certainly of all the downtown buildings, um, uh, unlike many of them, this one actually has an alternate for some off-street parking. It's just not on our property. We don't have the room to create it because we're at about 97% building coverage and we are, uh, for about 89.8% building coverage, um, and there isn't a spot on our property. But we do have access to the, to the parking driveway behind us through a, through a shared access easement. So those are the, that's the variance, uh, relief we need from those two sections.
And can you give bases for granting the variance for these?
Yeah, and I certainly, um, I certainly can provide, um, some images of the building, et cetera, as we get into, uh, anything that's required. But, um, yeah, with regard to the, uh, uh, the parking, uh, the variance relief sought, um, certainly we see the parking and loading, uh, space, um, uh, as a C1 variance with the physical hardship created by a combination of the lot size and the fact that the building, uh, basically the, the fully conforming and legally, um, existing structure, uh, basically fills out the property and therefore any expansion, um, within the guidelines of the ordinance in terms of square footage, uh, would require a parking variance for this property. So the, um, and, and if we were to try to find a balance where you could provide enough parking for a three-story building in the downtown, you'd have to remove, uh, probably 70 to 90% of the building to do it. And on a, a lot of this configuration, probably you take down 90% to get a parking lot. So clearly that's not the goal of a central business district, uh, and not, not the goal of our B4 district. Um, and again, reminding the board that we do per, uh, permit 100% building coverage and, uh, for three stories up to 40 feet in height. And I would also, um, note that pastor master plan updates have defined, uh, that the core of the B4 district should have zoning controls, which will discourage onsite parking in favor of well-located perimeter parking areas. That's exactly what we have here. So I'll quickly show an exhibit, especially since Mr. Bear brought it up. So I'll show a, a parking exhibit and we'll go ahead and, uh, define that and label that in one second. And this is, uh, labeled aerial photo. It is a, a near map image that was dated July 22nd, 2021. We created this today and it shows, um, the distribution of parking throughout the, throughout the, this section of the B4 zone. And so if we, uh, zoom in a little bit, you'll see, here's the property in question in the center. You can see, uh, as indicated, um, with some storage from, um, either from, uh, taking down some tents from, um, during the pandemic period, uh, and subsequently some trash from Ida when they cleaned out and gutted the restaurant. Uh, cars started parking in, uh, but there was no striping actually against the building. They would park either right in here or generally they would actually park angled, uh, where the, where the, uh, in this case in 2021, the tents were, um, and the heaters. But, uh, those have been gone. It's been cleaned up. I'll show you a picture of that in a second. But what I wanted to show on this image was that, um, relative to the, um, to that master plan uh, recognition or directive that, um, onsite parking should be discouraged in favor of the use of well-located perimeter parking areas, you can see certainly, um, with regard to employee parking, there is the area on Taylor Street, uh, area B of municipal lot four is reserved for permit parking. And that includes, uh, employee permit parking. And then further down, um, along, uh, Town Hall Plaza is parking lot six. That is also available for, um, employee permit parking. We didn't shade it, but municipal lot 19, which is where the municipal employees park, that also has space available. Uh, and that is also available for municipal permit parking. If we go back and zoom out, you can see that, um, the other public lots that are available is, uh, two-thirds of lot four on Taylor Street is available for, uh, pay, uh, station parking. We highlighted just a small portion of lot six, but lot six actually does obviously continue, uh, behind and runs up to and, and out near the Charlie, old Charlie Brown site, uh, parking all, all along there. Uh, there is the municipal lot 12, which, um, Melbourne Deli likes it when we call it the Melbourne Deli Lot. Um, and it does mostly service that. We didn't show it because it's across, uh, Main Street. But I wanted to use this exhibit to show that in addition to a fair amount of, um, on-street parking, which becomes more available as you move to the west or to the left side of the drawing, uh, there is also ample, um, municipal parking, permit parking available in those lots. And then if we expand that search radius, we go over to, uh, there is permit parking at the back of municipal lot one, which is at, um, Melbourne and Essex, I'm sorry, Main Street and Essex. And there is also, um, uh, parking available in the back of the, uh, municipal deck, which is actually mislabeled. That's actually parking lot two. So there is, uh, certainly well-positioned and available, um, uh, on-street parking as well as municipal pay-per-view parking. And more importantly, parking for employees that's in the area. And even when we did a recent analysis for the proposed development at 378, um, Melbourne Avenue, that study showed that in just the two shaded lots, uh, even with any new parking requirements or permit requirements, uh, required for the development of the, uh, um, the old pet food shop and the adjoining building, there was still adequate parking available in lot B, um, four and lot six, and didn't even count, uh, parking lot 19. So there certainly is more than enough capacity in the area to handle the three extra, um, uh, cars that are required by ordinance uh, in a manner that's actually consistent with the master plan. And so if I stop sharing this, um, this for a moment, I'm going to also show, um, this is an exhibit, uh, photo exhibit of six annotated site photos, uh, for the application. And except as noted, all photos were taken by Casey and Keller on the dates were shown. I thought it'd be interesting because we worked on 2009 and show what the building looked like in 2009.
Let's mark it, Mr. Keller, let's mark this A3. Uh, it'll be the entire photo exhibit of the six annotated site photos.
Thank you, Mr. Bozak. And so, um, as indicated, this goes back to 2009 when the, when Purdue is in the corner, uh, previous to Design Hub. You can see the Schultz building, uh, what it looked like coming out of the 1994 additions that they put on when they added the third story on that section. Um, and then the, uh, looking, moving a little further, and this is looking south, we're looking, uh, from Melbourne Avenue. You can see that it was kept, uh, Kapla, uh, Kapla and Company Insurance along with the dress shop and a gift shop on the basement, on the lower level. That stair has been there for quite a while. So there never has been internal access to that second floor. Obviously through time, if we go to photo number three, which is the property in question, looking southwest across Melbourne Avenue, you can see that, uh, the Design Hub was a significantly modernized building, but still very pedestrian-friendly in its fenestration. And then another style was the center, which was the expanded Schultz Fairey. Or now it's actually, uh, the elephant plate along with the doorway up to the second and third floor apartments. And on the right is the, uh, uh, the Natas, um, that is, uh, the Portuguese, uh, bakery and deli. And right next to it is, uh, Paul McClumsky, I think it is, and that's the Clolier. And then, um, there's the Melbourne, uh, Cinema, which is being renovated. There's about a six-foot, 10-foot gap in that section. You'll see that certainly from this perspective, um, the stairway that goes up to the second floor sits back currently about one foot, two inches. Uh, under the proposal, it'll move back to about two foot, uh, 10 inches. It'll move further back. So that stairway will not be seen when looking at from this perspective. And if we come around a little further down the street and we look back up towards the building, you can see on the right of the, uh, of the tailor, uh, and Clolier is the existing stairway up. Uh, this is where the, the 10-foot addition will go on the top of this building, rising up to be just a little taller than the, uh, the apartment massing, but fully consistent, in fact, well under the height allowance in the B4 zone. And then that stair will return. So, but keep in mind that that stair is moving back another foot and a half. So, so when, uh, it'll actually, this will be about the only space from this perspective, is about the only time you'll actually see where that stair tower plugs into the third floor. Because otherwise, if we continue a little further to the west or to the right, um, the Mil, the Melbourne Cinema will block it. And if we go for, further back up to the first photograph, we look back, you'll certainly never see that. So, um, and then going into the back, you can see that just recently, um, there was some striping put in where there were two stripes put in for spaces that straddle the, uh, the, the Schultz lot, lot one. Um, these were traditionally face-in and our suggestion is they'll go back to facing in. They don't, even if they just pull back to the property line, um, they won't, uh, they won't interfere with the stripe parking in the area. So, um, what you see here now is the tailor, uh, has been in the process for the last month of moving out of the space. So there's been a lot of trash stored under there. Today he was taking out the final, uh, uh, stuff as he was moving up the block. And then lastly, goes back to that 2022 photo, which again, you'll see, uh, there was really never any parking on the site. There was a little room for it. Um, there's a bollard in there, but essentially until the trash was there, parking was always angled in. And that's what we plan to go back to. So that's the, um, that's the site as it exists, um, today. I wanted to just go over that, um, that there really has never been parking and in all of the, the resolutions from 2009 into 2019, there's never been any parking on the site. With regard to the, uh, I will also point out, um, while Mr. Bear is right, I think, I think the testimony by the applicant is that this is not going to bring any new people in, um, because he's really just providing a better work environment, which really you want to provide for anybody that's going to rent this space. Um, and so if the next tenant comes, I think they'll still want to have a little more elbow room. Uh, I know in my office, um, I know, I know, um, mixed gender bathrooms are all the rage these days, but in my office, we have to keep two. Um, and it's really the same thing that this applicant is doing. So the spatial arrangements, um, are really, um, they're rather confined. They won't support a lot of people. Um, if this was to go on to another tenant, as Mr. Bear said, who did have increased needs, um, I would point out that that locally available parking inventory can more than handle, that's three extra spaces. And I would also point out that in the 2019 conversion, um, of the Schultz Fairey or into the retail spaces on the first floor with the two apartments, there was actually a net reduction in the parking demand. The parking demand went down by six spaces. So we're going back up three. So versus 2018 to some future date, when this might be occupied by two different, uh, businesses, um, we're still three parking spaces less required than it was five years ago. So, um, you know, I think that the amount that we're talking about, the parking that we're talking about is relatively insignificant, given the supply of parking in the area. But I think it's certainly consistent with the master plan. So with regard to the parking, I think as, as well as the, uh, the loading, there's no space to put a loading spot. We wouldn't want to demolish part of our downtown buildings to provide one. There is space on the back, uh, easement area to provide for loading for move-ins, move-outs. Um, and everything else is going to come through Melbourne, as I said. With regard to the second prong, um, of the, uh, of the, the criteria, that's the negative, right? I'm sorry, with regard to the negative criteria, um, again, for this applicant, there is, um, there is no anticipated, um, uh, increase in, in, uh, demand. Um, we're still less than we were three years ago. Um, I actually witnessed today, the employees like being in town. They provide positive reinforcement of the downtown. I saw them at 2:30 when I was taking pictures or a little earlier than that, coming back with packages from Melbourne Deli, going up the stairs into the office. So that's what we want in our downtown. We want office people who are going to come in, they're going to use the restaurants. They're going to then go and take a spin class after work. Um, they're going to populate the downtown, which is part of the vision plan and the master plan. So that leads me to the second prong, which is that there's no substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Um, we think this is completely consistent with the master plan and downtown vision plan and good planning principles. On the master plan reexamination from 2018, uh, of the goals and objectives on page 43, um, objective number, um, goal, goal number four is to maintain and enhance economic vitality of the downtown of the business districts. Objective 4.01 through four are to promote opportunities for high-quality retail and commercial activities in all business districts. We are making this a better quality space for any. We are making this a better quality space for any, any tenant, including this one. To maintain a pedestrian scale in all pre, pre-business districts, we certainly are maintaining a pedestrian scale. Pedestrians feel that ground level, that's not changing. And the, the story that we're adding is completely consistent with the mastering, the massing that's permitted in the downtown. With regard to uh, uh, objective four point oh three, leverage opportunities for new commercial development or redevelopment of existing properties where appropriate. So we're certainly making this, rather than trying to create new offices, we're creating an office based on top of the existing building to satisfy an existing tenant. And then certainly to strengthen existing business centers, including the downtown core, and that's certainly what this does because this allows this tenant or any tenant. To stay right in the heart of the downtown. Um, it's exciting actually to be, have a window looking out into. Um, the, the nexus of our downtown, the intersection of Milburn and Main Street. I think that's what uh, the applicant and their, their tenants are so excited about. This is also consistent with the two thousand twenty one master uh, downtown vision plan. Uh, the goals for the plan on page ten, goal number four is to maintain and enhance economic vitality of the downtown. Um, and it specifically talks about parking on page sixty seven. And one of the recommendations is to eliminate required off street parking for non-residential uses and incorporate provisions for shared parking. While parking is important, there's a trade off between requiring enough parking for business patrons and requiring too much parking, which can be a burden on incoming business. That wants to locate in the downtown. In this case, we have a business that wants to improve its facility so they can stay in the downtown. Um, we get it on, on things like Beehive Properties. Um, those are large, full block. Uh, multi-family residential developments, those have to be fully parked. But on our downtown businesses, this is what we expect. This is good planning. Um, and this is, you know, we're, we're, we're dealing with parking requirements. We have no idea what the impact long term is going to be on. Uh, ride sharing, on uh, autonomous vehicles. So all indicators at all the planning conferences I always go to indicate parking demand is going to drop over the future, not increase. So I think we can certainly approve this um, and feel good that we're not going to overburden the existing uh, facilities. That uh, whether it's this tenant or the future tenant, um, the town, town can handle the extra three car parking. Uh, we think this is a great application. Um, as so, as you saw by the photos. Uh, Mister Schultz doesn't do anything except things that are high quality. You can disagree with the aesthetics, but they're always very well executed, very well constructed. And that's exactly what Mister Schultz will do here. He'll continue to make this a building that uh, is, does our downtown proud. Uh, we think it's a great application and I'm happy to answer any questions, or I can start going through the professional reports.
Why don't you go through the professional reports to the extent that the applicant is willing to accept recommendations?
Okay, uh, there's really nothing, so we'll, we'll comply with everything in the fire department's um, memorandum of five nineteen twenty two. There was no comment by the Forester. I think we've already addressed the comments of the environmental commission. With regard to Ms. Callahan, the township engineer and, and board, board engineer, um, we uh. Basically, there are a few comments. Um, Ms. Callahan agrees with um, the rationale for an impact statement waiver. And there was discussion of a wall mounted fixture career of the building. Um, that fixture is motion censored. Um, and that'll stay, but I think the architect indicated we're, we're going to add. Task lights outside the door entrances where required by code, and we're also going to add what we think are four sconces. To the path lighting uh, along the building and in the back, so that from dusk to dawn, there'll be a nice lighting back there. Will have any negative impact on the surrounding residential properties. It's down low, it'll be focused down. Um, and, and I want to get to Mister Pedo's um, report. I think we're certainly happy to have uh, either engineering or planning. Uh, the planning consultant review our selection, uh, and appropriateness of those fixtures if the board were to approve this project. So I think that covers um, Ms. Callahan's memo. With regard to the planning report. Uh, there's a fair amount of uh, discussion and information. I think we've uh, covered the rationale in support of both the negative criteria. Uh, and the positive criteria in support of the variances under C one. Um, with regard to the, the, uh, there was a fair amount of questions asked um, on page four. Um, nothing that we needed to provide as a review. Um, number five, uh, comment number five under. Uh, site menus, comments and planning on page five. Um, that's where we've indicated that we are going to provide a, an enclosure for the recycling. The, um, the, the tenants, um, will go back to using the dumpsters in the back, which are all shared. For refuse, there are some that are food, there are some that are non-food. Uh, they can use the non-food dumpsters in the back. That's what all of them do. It's actually. I think in the, in one of those, probably in the two thousand and nine application, I referred to this backyard as. One of Milburn's dirty little secrets, because it was an awful space. Over time, it, it suffered a little bit during the pandemic and, and from after Ida, but if you've been back there recently, you see that. It's actually a, a well cared for space. Um, there's good parking, there's good shared amenities. We think it's great that they share the dumpsters for the refuse. With regard to recycling. Uh, we would be uh, able to create that shed uh, underneath. Consistent with the same materials of the, of the proposed building with a door that we could supply, we could support recycling in. And the recycling could either be handled through private carding, or it could be put out to the curb. The um. So I think that covers um, number five. I think of the architectural comments, things that we've agreed that we will, we will agree to. On B, um, architectural comments, number four. Um, we will provide the colors and materials on the drawings. I think Mister, Mister Marquesi already went over those. We'll put them on the drawing. Item number five, the five we've agreed to, um, and that's that we're, we're confirming and modifying the plans to correctly show the windows. Um, where they exist on the facade. And item number six, um, we've uh, we've. I think we've actually answered that, so we don't have to comply, comply with that, but our, our drawings will be modified to confirm the removal of that window. So we'll certainly comply with the four, five and six. The rest, I think we've answered in questions with regard to circulation. I think um, things that we uh, think are great ideas, um, and we'd be happy to comply with section C two on page six. Uh, we revised the plan to provide protective bollards between the proposed external staircase and the parking driveway area. We also under D, utility uh, lighting comments, section number three. Um, we provided testimony to the, uh, as to the lighting, and we will provide that. Um, and normally that gets reviewed by the, the township engineer. We're agnostic as to whether it's renewed by the township planner or the engineer. Uh, but we're happy to uh, to show the details of the lighting that would help to light that path. Um, I believe that we've either answered all of the rest of the, of Mister uh, Pedo's questions. And those are the one, two, three, four, five, six sections um, that we've agreed to make changes to the plans.
Thank you. Uh, can I ask if you can speak to the basement? Uh, and its presence and specifically with regard to uh, in section D, the utility and lighting. Questions, number two, um, just referenced not impeding the ground mounted HVAC or if that's going to be relocated.
We will be, I'm sorry, we will be real, there is one, when, once we. Prior to the modification we made today, there was no need to change any of the HVAC. Um, the HVAC could be supplied through the ground units and a combination of the, of the top mounted units. Um, what's nice about this building is that when it was used for cold storage for the fur, for the farrier. Um, there was an oversized HVAC system put in, so that can, that can spread the wealth throughout the floors. Uh, so no additional units are required. With regard to the ground mounted units, now that we've agreed to, to uh, put an enclosure in for the. Glass um, and metal recycling, uh, we will need to relocate one of the package units. And that will go into that same little well, not in the basement, but in that same little area. There's plenty of room for access um, to that area. Um, and the basement is not used by this tenant. There's no use in the basement that I know of. Uh, that's, there's an access point back there, but there's plenty of room to um, wrangle the fourth HVAC unit. In, under the existing building, and it will not impede the use of the proposed stair.
Okay, thank you for that testimony. And those changes that are, that you just described are, are going to be re-described in. Uh, like revised, revised plans?
Yeah, when Mister Marquesi uh, revises the plan to show the enclosure for recycling, he's going to have to show that that. Um, that single um, HVAC unit will be, will be moved around and underneath the building.
Thank you. Okay.
Either on his drawing or my drawing, yes.
Thanks, um. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Were you, were you completed?
Yes, I am.
Great. Um, questions from board members uh, for Mister Keller based on. The entirety of his testimony. Um, Graham, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, first, thank you, Rich, for the testimony. Very detailed and, and I think it was very helpful for the board. Appreciate it. Um, I just had one follow up question that may have been touched on. I know there's been a lot of things discussed. Um, I just wanted to, to quickly talk through pedestrian access to the second and third floor. Obviously, you know, now. The stair access is the public right of way at the front of the building directly. Um, and the reconfiguration will, you know, relocate that access to the stairway to the rear of the building. Um, will there be a requirement for any signage or any other directional signage for, you know, pedestrian visitors visiting these second and third floor spaces? It sounds like, um, you know, the proposed use will not have visitors on site, but you know, future use may contemplate, you know, visitors to these, these spaces. Um, is that something that should be contemplated now by the board to, to ensure that for the future?
Uh, we talked to the, the applicant. There is a small sign for T three on the first floor now, and they felt that that could be. Uh, just slightly modified to indicate that it was uh, uh, around the corner. Uh, obviously, if another tenant or two tenants take over that space in the future. Uh, they would be required to meet the signage requirements for front facing signs in terms of area. Um, and if, if they couldn't meet the ordinance requirements, they would have to come back to the Board of Adjustment. Um, for an approval. So the intent right now in my discussion with the, with T three is that they don't feel the need for any additional wayfinding signage.
Okay, um, and then kind of secondary to that, um, and this was alluded to in our report under the circulation questions. And may have touched on easement agreements. Is there any existing agreements between this property and the adjacent theater? Uh, for, you know, pedestrian passage along that alleyway space? Or is there uh, an easement agreement with the property to the rear for egress? You know, the stair is going to, you know, terminate at the back of this building. Can somebody, you know, by right walk off this and will that, that access be protected under any future development scenarios for the adjacent properties?
And we brought that up with the owner as well. They, the, there is an access. There's an easement agreement which will allow pedestrian and vehicular access through lots fifteen and sixteen to the back in perpetuity. So like pedestrians can always get in there. Um, when um, the Mandelbams purchased the movie theater, we're also working on that property. Uh, the first thing they did is reach out to Mister Schultz. Um, and the owners of lots fifteen and sixteen to talk about dumpsters and the pedestrian access and keeping that open. So. While there is no um, easement agreement in place. Um, there was certainly a gentleman's agreement. That space has been there for as long as the movie theater's been there. Um, people have been cutting down on the, the pathway on both sides of the movie theater. Um, I don't know whether any prescriptive rights have been picked up by the public or not, but um, the uh, the landlords of those. Four properties um, have uh, expressed a willingness to work and get along together and they'll continue to do that. If for some reason, somebody sold it, um, you know, and there's no charges, any of these easements have been without financial compensation. Because Mister Schultz has said, you know, we're all, we all need each other here. Um, so if, if for some reason. An adverse tenant bought it and decided to put a gate up on that alleyway. Um, T three is aware that they would have to come down the uh, the public easement through lot fifteen and sixteen. But we think it's highly unlikely. Uh, it's the way the towns acted forever. I've been using. The alleyways on both sides of there to get from Starbucks back to Anthony Surrillo's office or to get to parking on Taylor Street. So that'll continue. Um, and, but there always is, there is always access protected through the.
Appreciate that. Um, my recommendations to the board would just be to request that a copy of that existing easement agreement with lot fifteen, sixteen, just be. Accompanied with this, this application, so that in the future, if there's any question, we, we have access to that uh, through, through the town. So that would just be my suggestion on that. Thank you.
Can I, can I just clarify, because you just said that existing easement agreement, but I thought Rich testified that there wasn't a, to formalize one. I just want to make sure I understand.
It, I, I think based on what he said, and please clarify me if I'm incorrect, is that there is an easement agreement with the property to the rear for pedestrian and vehicular access.
Okay.
Um, not with the theater property. So, but as long as one of the. Accessways is recorded officially and, you know, copy of which is included with this application material for record keeping, I think that would, that would help protect uh, this use in the future.
We'd be happy to provide it. It's very blanket in nature, but we'd be happy to provide that.
Madam Chair, I believe it is part of the application documents.
Thank you. Okay, we will confirm that. Uh, other questions from the planning board members, Gaston, go ahead.
Uh, just a question similar to the easement question. With the parking spot, is that a. One or two parking spots for Mister Schultz there behind the building?
Well, there's really has never been any, but um, there have been, um. There are two spaces that Mister Schultz has always used the one space at the end. Um, and it's usually been diagonally off to the right. Uh, just last week, Mister Talco, one of the owners re-stripe back there that I showed the picture earlier. And they did stripe out two spaces that kind of cross that line. Um, it's always been there, you know, when you move on to the, that's for the. Um, the moonshine property, there's been a more flexible arrangement between everybody back there. There's no, uh, there's no. Um, customer parking in the back. There is some customer parking that sneaks behind. Um, uh, Rockin' Joes and Miss Lynn and uh, and uh, the um, the beauty salon on the end. But the property right behind us is that there's no customer parking, and so it's always been a little flexible. And there's always been at least one space used, if not two, and they can go right back to where they were.
Okay, so if, if it is private parking. Would Mister Schultz be amenable to, to putting in an electric charging station or two? People will be there for prolonged periods of time for work, so there is ample time to, to fully charge a car. Um, and I know we're gonna probably end up granting a variance here for it, because there's not really a lot of space on the site for parking spaces. But it would be a great addition, I think, to the building.
I'm not, I, it's, I'm not entirely sure we could get it on our property. Um, because once we put the addition on and the bollards on, um, to get a charging station. It, the, the charging station may have to go over the line and into lot sixteen. So I don't know that we can um, offer to do that, because we don't, while there's an easement agreement for access and parking, et cetera. I don't think, and, and the language is vague and we'll get your copy of it, but I don't know that we can offer to put a charging station on someone else's property.
Okay, well, if, if there is room back there too by the air conditioners, it would be great. I don't know, whatever, whatever agreement they have worked out where the parking spaces go. I think there is enough room, but yeah, and I, I agree, it has to be on the right territory. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Gaston. There are questions for Mister Keller. Okay, um, at this point, we'd open up to any attendees, uh, any members of the public who may have questions for Mister Keller based on his testimony. Feel free to raise hand and ask any questions. Okay, seeing none, um, we will turn it back to Mister Surrillo.
That concludes our direct testimony.
Okay, um, discussion from members of the board, if anybody has anything. Concerns or uh, any remaining questions that we would want to address at this time. Ms. Nevis, go ahead, Deborah.
Um, I may have missed it. Did we discuss the recycling of old materials removed from the site?
I think we talked about recycling itself, but I don't know if you meant uh, in the, the construction.
Yes.
I don't recall, but I turn it back to the applicants.
I thought that Mister Keller testified that they would, uh, they would do that. Uh, is that correct, Mister Keller?
That is correct.
Do those materials need to be specified, like what types get recycled?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I know that most of my clients do try to salvage what they can, because. Unlike years ago, when you crunch things up and put them in dumpster, now there's a value to that. Um, and so, um, I'm sure certainly any, any metals are saved. Um, wood not always, but if they take large sheets of wood out, that can be recycled. So to the extent possible. Uh, we're certainly, Mister Schultz indicated an enthusiasm of trying to save whatever materials he can. I need to reuse them or, or market them, uh, but I don't know the specifics.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, at this time, I'll open it up for any um, members of the public who are will, who wish to make a testimony. So not a question, but just to be sworn in and make any public testimony. Um, if you would like to do so, you can use the raise hand function and let us know. Okay. Seeing none, bring us back to deliberation. So Ed, if I could turn to you just to keep us in line on where we stand with the final two. I think we did all of the checklist waivers, including approving the facilities plan on the condition that we would receive testimony, which we now have. Any other conditions as may be imposed per tonight's testimony?
I think you hit the the first one in terms of of taking action to grant the the waiver based waiver for the facilities planning based upon testimony that has been provided. It would be a motion to grant preliminary and final site plan approval. If the board is so inclined to grant the two variances, one for the number of parking spaces and the second one for the elimination or or no loading zone of a variance from section six or seven point one. There's a variety of conditions including the typical conditions that are imposed, the standard conditions. There will also be conditions for revision of the plans consistent with the testimony that has been provided. They will furnish if they have not with their application of copy de-easement with lots fifteen and sixteen. There'll be a condition that the materials from the building and the renovation would be recycled as necessary.
And as you're going through these, I know we talked about if we granted a parking variance, we are not requiring, or are we requiring, I guess, we opened it for discussion of any business permit parking?
Yeah, I'm glad you raised that. I I would ask the board to consider imposing that condition for the employees who have vehicles or who access the building or the business with vehicles, because there may be others who, you know, do not use or use public transportation or other means, and there's no need for an applicant to provide a business parking grid for every employee, but it should be provided for every employee who uses a vehicle to go to and from work. Those are the ones that I have right now, Madam Chair, as as usual, when we put together the resolution, there may be others that come up as we more carefully look through our notes and testimonials.
Thanks. I will make a motion to approve this application. Granting the two variances is set forth for parking and loading zone as well as conditions as discussed by council, the typical conditions plus revisions of plans addressing recycling. As well as imposing a condition requesting or requiring purchase of employee parking permits for those traveling to site by car.
Second that.
Is that Diane?
Yes, sorry.
Gaston Hopper?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
To Jonathan Sean?
Yes.
Diane Egglow?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Thank you.
On behalf of the applicant, thank you, board.
Oh, if everybody's in Melbourne, they're hearing all this thunder, so I'm glad most people are home and safe. If not, please get home safely. Thank you for your time this evening. We have no further items on our agenda for the evening, so I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you all in favor.
Aye.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Bye, thank you.